Step up IT, we're continuing to move forward with them. They're the company, that's an offsite company that's helped. They're our kind of backup to our IT department. And I would imagine in a month, we will be, they're going to take over both our onsite and offsite backup. So we've never had offsite backup before, it's kind of been a goal of mine. And they're going to upgrade our internal backup in a way that then they feel comfortable managing it, so. It's happening, and I think it will be a good thing, that'll allow Paul to sleep a little better here.
I, I would like to just say that Paul has been just really responsive and helpful and I really appreciate him a lot.
Yeah, he's doing a good job. Facilities, lots of things going on, we kind of put off till summer. We got in that orchid building, but we really haven't landscaped around, Jeff and his people have done some stuff there now that's at a level. Continuing most of the projects at the middle school, finishing a lighting project, going to L E D. Got that started last year, continuing to work on that, lots of carpet replacement. Normal cleaning, and then a lot of HVAC AC stuff, so the fire department is basically going through every unit. So every, you know, whether it's a unit to a specific classroom or a block of classrooms, going through each one. Right now, we're using, we got approved with UNP, you might recall about a month or two ago, eighty-five thousand dollars allocated to this, I think the last date earlier today, it's been around thirty-five thousand. About finding lots of little things, either a compressor not working in one spot in the middle school up in the duct. They found a big hole blown out, and we were essentially eating at it for, I don't know how many years, so. Lots of little things like that, that I'm hopeful, both on the heating and the air conditioning side. It's going to be upgraded, so I'll make the experience for staff and students a little bit better this next school year. I've authorized up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so eighty-five thousand dollars reason to mess her as we go. I know it's going to be more than that, I've told you. Where we maintain around a million dollars in our facilities reserve. Given the authority to spend that out, another sixty-five thousand dollars up to one fifty to continue this process of going through all, all our HVAC stuff, so that's going well. We're continuing the summer school, start of our second week was today, got three more weeks. That's going well, lots happening there from trips to going to the pool, to swim.
Artisan residence stuff.
Yeah, we have artists and residents, Jen said it, she's doing some music. We get meals from Food for Lain County. We come up to L C C every day, that's been a little bit ahead, that kind of turnaround. But no troubles.
How many students are attending?
I don't know a hard number, but at the elementary, we have one classroom for every grade level, I can get you that.
No, I was just curious, because it's optional, obviously.
I would guess it's a hundred, maybe a little over a hundred at the elementary school, so we have a K one, two, three, four, five, you know, six classrooms. And the middle school and high school, a handful of kids, so I was over at high school the other day, Mr. Monakin had it. Art was out there too, he was teaching a, sounded like a physics class, but some kind of science class, I think. There's some, there's some Mr. Johnson C T classes. Anyway, so I had a little kids, went to high school, one grade level class at the one, but you, it'd be good for me anyways, I'll get you the numbers. No troubles with the buses, they've been running. Kids hasn't started yet, right?
Next week.
Yeah, but here in a week, so that's our incoming kinders, and get a chance to pad up the spirit school, I have it. Let me see.
Big class, little class?
Don't know yet, so kindergarten registration, well, we do a registration in the spring, no matter how much we promote it. I don't remember how many we have come, but they did it, we had fifteen families show up, you know, the ones that are really on it. Real kindergarten registration, I want to say it's August seventeenth, it's around the middle of August, that's when we'll get better. Grasp of how many we got coming up. And I think that's all I have.
The retreat is at the tenth.
It is the eleventh, Thursday, August eleventh, at seven thirty. That's what I wrote, I wrote it down here, I'm breaking it, definitely it's on the calendar.
Here?
Here, we'll plan to be done by noon. And for some reason, if it goes longer, we'll maybe either set up in the Zoom, you know, a short meeting, if we have some other topics, any follow-up that needs to happen. But the morning of Thursday, August eleventh, we will have some kind of breakfast coffee here. And maybe in the morning, so we'll see, to read it closer. All right, that's it. All right, here's the year going by, this, so we need to do the annual appointment of the just organizational appointments for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and we just do this every year. Obviously, we get, you know, Gary is the clerk, your business manager, and who the budget officer is, and you can read all of it up there yourself. It's a bit of policy slash law requirement that we identify who who is in these roles, who are the attorneys that we use.
Can you scroll back up to the number, resolution number?
This is something you do every July.
So do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash oh one. A second.
Got a motion in second to approve the resolution, any further discussion? On papers, guys?
Hi.
Motion carries, what was the figure? And next is the West Lane Tech, we got with the board.
Yeah, so one piece of our contract with them is that every year, the district does an evaluation of what they're doing, gives them all a summary report for the last nine years, I've done that. Superintendents before me have done that. Now this year, I wanted to do something a little more in-depth, and I attached the report that it was just last year, I think I learned the OSBA provides this service, I think it's a common thing that charge schools have in their contracts to sponsor districts that they review annually, give them some feedback. So, A, it was nice to have somebody that has a lot more experience in charge rule law under this versus me, who probably doesn't dive as deep as I need to. And B, just for them to get a different perspective than me to hear someone from the outside, so I think I'd said that to you, it's, you know, a lot more extensive than anything I ever did. The highlights I would point out, and I've talked to Garcia about them. Give them commendations on the fact that they continue to serve a highly mobile and at-risk population of students, not only in this area, but surrounding areas. That their near-term financial majors are healthy, and that the conversations that the OSBA folks have with staff indicate is strong commitment to the program and students and their success. The two areas to keep our eye on, they mentioned one, a long-term financial indicators. Just due to their enrollment breakdown, which is similar to all schools. You know, initially, you start with the pandemic, okay, I thought their enrollment would go up, you know, the online option. However, just like us, starting a online school, now almost every district has an online option, so that's true. There's a lot more folks in that, in that game than just them. And then the second one, they recommended that their school board review some of their bylaws just around the way that their board operates and that they get in consultation with a, with an attorney around that, and they're going to pursue that through this school year, so. Next year, I will go back to doing my review, and then the following year is the year that their contract is up for renewal. And OSBA has a, has a service similar to this, costs a little bit more, where they'll come down and do a similar evaluation and make a recommendation to the school board. And if you've been a part of this, like I have, and said, we'll be out for twenty years, typically, what happens is the district makes a recommendation to continue or not, and we have folks from West Lane Tech come and advocate the benefits of West Lane Tech. And it's hard for, you know, the district has continually acknowledged the benefit that this program has. At the same time, it also provides some challenges to the district, so to get a, get a neutral outside party to advise the board. Here are the reasons that you really need to keep West Lane Tech, or, or not, here are the reasons for as a group that consistently does this around Oregon, that you might want to consider not redoing this contract, so. I'll come back to do it next year, then the following year, my plan would be to have that recommendation come from OSBA, it'll give us a little more solid ground either way, whether we continue or decide not to continue. And so we're always happy with what they did. Any other questions?
When did you say that's up for renewal?
So it would be twenty-three, twenty-four, so our contract with them goes through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So typically, probably January of twenty-four, so a year and a half, we'll start talking to them about the contract. These folks do their review, by March or April, they make some recommendations, the board, we think it should end in June thirtieth, no, we definitely think you should renew it for another five years. As it is, or we think we should renew for another five years, but we encourage you to get these things in your contract with them if you're going to redo it.
What are the concerns? Just because I'm not familiar with West Lane Tech.
Some of the concerns have dwindled in, in regards to their change of leadership and the fact when they moved off of our campus.
Okay, yeah, because it used to be.
It used to be on high school campus, so there was a flow of students that we had no, that high school had no oversight of that were on our campus, that became problematic, so you might get a kid from Bethnal that's had some issues and now is in all the West Lane tech.
Okay, so they, other schools feed that program.
They can get it, they can stay.
Oh, okay.
They typically, when they're, you know, enrolling from Ben to Rose, they'll come on site, but we definitely get other people in the county that will grow. Now, I would say, you know, it places a, places a burden on our district business office, we need to still manage all the money, all the money comes through us and goes over there. They don't, they don't go directly to them. It's reduced a little bit now that we've started our own online school, but going back two or three years, there was always a conflict with students saying, you know, they get in trouble for coming class later, no, screw you, I'm going to West Lane tech. Well, there's this easy avenue out for students that may be struggling, where we're trying to encourage and hold accountable. We lose the leverage when it's just, I'm going.
Given another option.
Yeah, and another option is so close. It's just a totally different model, now, if a kid really wants on high school, we can say, oh, we have an option as well. We had forty-seven of our own kids, if we wouldn't have our own options program, we'd have lost a lot to West Lane tech, so it helps us retain A D M. For every, for every kid that we lose to go and choose to West Lane tech, you know, that's a loss to you. In our contract with them, it only allows second semester, ninth graders to senior, so freshmen come in. Our contract is written in a way that it's not allowed, but they can appeal, that creates a lot of conflict, so we'll get the eighth graders that want to start their high school career at West Lane tech.
Without giving it to them.
Without giving that to our contract, because you can't do that, but you can appeal, well, typically, they appeal, I'll talk to middle school staff, the parent, the kid. And nine times out of ten, we'll prove it for them to start there, but it's another area of potential.
Okay.
Just, just to clash a little bit, but like I said, it has improved, the biggest thing that's improved it was them not being on our site, which was just really a direct, you know, it's like another school housed on our high school, recruiting's going to take, come over here, you don't got to get up at six-thirty, you know, it's actually made the noon. You know, it wasn't helpful to give this school a score.
You know what the other thing too is, is that when people are moving into the area, and they look at the district, graduation rate, that's, that's in our district rate, they don't look, they just look at the high school graduation rate, it's obviously different than the district one, so. So it hurts us, hurts, if people don't look at the high school, they look at the district only.
They look at our district graduation rate, it might be sixty-five percent, well, that's because West Lane Tech is ten percent, and the high schools is ninety-three. Well, district sixty-six, the state average is eighty-two, why are you below, well, it's because they mostly have seniors. Seniors are accredited division from all over Lain County, not just ours, so I got kids from Bethel and Crow and Drake Lake County against the February school district graduation rate. Where people look a little bit, that doesn't, good point, Marcus.
Yeah.
It only comes up once a year, but I always get calls and questions, or people commenting on Facebook, look at the district's graduation rate, so, no. I didn't know oversight, they're not our staff, right, I mean, students that live here, half of them.
Right.
But they, it does, you know, we have a class of around a hundred, and if they have twenty-five seniors, well, now our, you know, our number is one twenty-five, they're pulling from, and they have a real low rate, we definitely have expertise.
And the, and E H S has been above the state average for years, but.
Our district rate has been below.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, if there's other questions, we'll move on to the Estorin capital project, I believe. So similar to the one I had to approve the HVAC we're submitting, and I don't know if the folks at O D E will approve it. But I gave my best effort to write it today, with your approval tonight, I'm going to submit tomorrow. It's similar to, maybe six months ago, we approved, for those of you that have been, and almost all of you know, to high school football games, the P A there. So we spent about twenty grand, it's a mobile one, we can also take out to the track. I believe it's, it's wireless to speakers, and it'll be on the other side as well, and light poles, so if you set up, wow, I'm good. We want to do the same thing inside of our high school, so the P A system there is as old as the school. Lots of rooms don't work, meaning most work, they can hear the office when the, when the system's working right. A lot of the rooms don't have the ability to immediately call the office in or see that kind of thing, so the trick is saying I'm doing this in response to COVID. Well, it's a stretch, but it does help us quickly communicate COVID protocols, communication changes, whether it's a problem in a room. You know, a kid, let's say a kid is sick, or, you know, trying to relate it to COVID. There's questions about what, what's happening today, the kids have to wear masks or whatever. So we've gotten a couple quotes, just under a hundred thousand dollars, it'll rewire everything, new, new speakers. We'll also be choosing an option, clocks in each room, that's another issue there at high school, a lot of the clocks are not all the same time, you know, one room is three minutes in, two minutes behind. Or there's also an option where we have clocks like that, or a digital display that would allow the office to send a message. So a tone would go off, and every room would see something, it's tight, you know, again, they have so much COVID related, but in an emergency situation. Another way to communicate with rooms clearly, so the way I'm writing it up is acknowledging the fact this level was another base, but here's how we're always specific to COVID. Now, you know, things aren't, if it's administrators are busy, lock going on during the day, this will just save time, if they need to communicate things to every teacher, it's an email. You can't really get to them quickly, especially when the P A's out, there was at least a month this year when the P A was not working at all, so. With your approval, I'm going to submit this request to use a hundred thousand dollars of our Estorin money. This is a five-year-long project, it's something like, you're going to approve it, and we're going to go in September, parts around back order, labor, et cetera, but in talking with Paul, he thought they could get started on the project, hopefully by winter break, get some basics in. Continue to work throughout the year, and wrap it up next summer if we got approval, so. Again, with your approval tonight, I'll submit it to O D E tomorrow, hopefully that's a few weeks of the year, that'd be okay. If not, then my plan, let's say O D turns this down, it's still a need. So the two options will be on the break to the facilities committee, if O D turns us down in September and say, we have two options, one, it's on our long-range facility plan, high school P A, or he was part of that group, that's one of the things on this. We could say, let's just hold off, we're moving this up list next time we go out for a bond, or two, I could say, this is so important, I want to get it done now. We're going to use some of our facilities reserve money, let's take a hundred thousand dollars, we're just going to do it, so.
I, I feel like it should be a higher priority.
Yeah, I agree.
I, than waiting till the next bond. And just because communication is so important, and for a classroom to not have the ability to contact the office, I bet that brings me actually.
Maybe our teachers for safety, I mean, you know, I mean.
No, no, I can tell. So I'll keep, you know, first step is this, if it gets approved, we're, we're go, if it doesn't, I hear what you're saying, we're going to, you know, there's other options to just, let's say we identify the six, eight, ten rooms, whatever it is, they can't communicate back to say, okay, we're hiring somebody to just, you know, fix the speaker that's broke, or whatever, not redoing the whole system. And putting it off to one, another option too, you know, there's things, I don't know what the timeline is, but we can, let's say I say, okay, O D turn this down, we're going to spend the hundred grand to do this, I can still include that in the bond when we go out in two years. You know, it's about repay the district that hundred, this is what you bought, we did that a little bit with our, with our last one for some things that we had done. For example, hiring Scott Rhodes, right, we paid him twenty-five thousand dollars to go through this whole process, right? If the bond passed, if the bond doesn't pass, we're paying them out of our facility, if it passes, oh, we can reimburse that cost. And this is something that is definitely top of our list, and hopefully, they approved the outside one for athletics, hopefully, definitely not a guarantee.
All right, so with this required board action, motion to approve the Estorin capital project.
I make that motion to approve the Estorin capital project update.
I second it.
Got a motion in second, and any further discussion? All of the papers stand.
I'm trying.
Motion carries for zero.
August retreat agenda, I P is, what I have on the agenda so far is in no particular order, I'll get into more organized orders when we approach. Settle five fifty-four, that's the one that legislature passed, currently it's around concealed handguns, so some districts in the past, our policy has been, we restrict handgun carrying from Queens. I could say that for employees out, you know, teacher, you don't get out, you shut your desk. Concealed handgun carry, with all this concealed, this concealed, they can carry it on campus, there has been instances where someone hasn't had a concealed, open carry, no, can't do that. And this new law allows districts to say, to make essentially schools a gun-free zone. So in that case, we'd be telling concealed handgun owners, you cannot carry on campus. So some districts are utilizing it, others are not, I'll give a bunch of information on this and share it with you. If you have thoughts, bring them, I'll let you know, my thought would be to stay the course. To not restrict this, essentially, as it is now, it's really no different, you know, if I, if we restricted it and somebody's coming on with concealed, I don't know anyways.
Right.
Out of the computers, it's visible, I'm asking them to leave or go put it in their car, so all we're doing is then creating an opportunity for conflict and criminalization or, you know.
Or just negative, a negative tone to somebody that's a concealed handgun carrier.
Sure, so anyway, I just want to have the conversation, so if it comes up at some point, the board could say, yeah, we discussed it, we knew this was an option, we elected not to do it, or again, if you still need other thoughts, we can talk about that. The two, two, three board elections, I thought that'll be an agenda item, just to kind of have Michelle reading, make sure everybody knows who's up for election in May of twenty twenty-three, have a discussion about, hopefully, all of you continuing, because there are, I'm running again, if you're not, you know, if we have a little leeway, the more leeway we can, we could know that you were not going to, that would be good, so be a topic. Artie will be a topic, I think it's October, some date in October is there, they're trying to pass my plan. I'm either going to write, or I'm going to reach back out to that, can't think of his name now, but the, the realtor we used to have was set up initially. I might contact him and have him send Artie a letter and say, a reminder, here's the date, if you think you're not going to pay, here's the plan. We're going to take it over the next day, have a conversation. We're gonna take it over the next day, have a conversation with the board to make sure that's the path you want to go. Or if they're asking for another extension, you know, have a discussion around what that might look like or might not look like. So conversation on Artie, conversation on classified bargaining. This year, the classified contract runs out in, you know, the three-year contracts versus up June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So typically in December-ish, they'll let us know any weekend to bargain. Usually start February-ish. Could be a difficult bargaining year, potentially with any time inflation is through the roof. Right? Employees are hit hard. It'll, a big part will be what schools are funded at in the legislature next spring. So just know that that's on the horizon. And I'd like to get, as we have done recently, at least since I've been in this role, get a board member that's willing to be a member.
Hundred and thirty percent?
Hundred and thirty.
Two fifty percent was that? We have a ten on that before?
Maybe, yeah, probably more than three years ago. So, anyhow, that'll be on the agenda. Our board operating agreement. So we have that agreement that we cite each year. We'll live that over, see if there's any adjustments. Goals. I kind of got some ideas around goals. I'm gonna flip by you. We'll, we'll go into it then. Kind of give you a financial update by, by the time, because we don't have it yet, but by the time of the retreat, I'll know exactly what we understand for last year, what our carryover is, give you a solid number. Kind of give you some predictions and forecasts throughout the year, what things are looking like. Just kind of give you an update on the twenty-two, twenty-three year. That'll be an item, a little more clarity on our staffing issues, where we're good, where we might have some trouble. And then the handbook, all of that. So five, six. That's nine items, but this is also your retreat. So open the ideas if you have other topics you would like to discuss that board.
Yeah, the only topic that I could think of is already on there, so.
Great. Anything comes up between now and then, should we email all that? That's all I got.
All right.
Okay.
Next up is personnel. We've got a number of hirings and then a couple resignations for certified staff. So those will need to be approved. You can sum all together.
I move that we approve the licensed deploy resignation, new hires, transfers and others. That's written. Second it.
Got a motion and second to approve the certified hours transfers and others. Do we have any discussion? On papers, yeah.
I am.
Motion, Gary, is four to zero. Then I, we have a number of classified or extrajudy contracts that, a whole bunch of those. Have we put out yet for a trainer?
Today.
Yeah. That would be interesting to see what we.
I'm not hopeful. We did post it today.
Yeah. I mean, we didn't have one for a long time.
I know.
But you did, like, what you had, it was super nice to happen. I know that.
We didn't have one interest, right?
Yeah.
We had the, you might remember the old OSU lady sit, Sherry Johnson. I guess you might know her horse lady.
Oh, um.
Yeah, Sherry. Corby. Yeah, her daughter. Yeah, her daughter went to, going to to O S U school for this. How did she move into Florida?
What's that?
With her boyfriend. Oh, really?
I think so. That's her dad told me, that hers grew up great.
Oh, no.
I think she's going to Florida with her boyfriend.
Maybe he needs a boyfriend.
Maybe, maybe. She's been asked to daughter, so maybe it's not.
Okay. Anyway, so we have, we have a little bit of a lead, but you know, many have like trainers somewhere.
All right, any late or closing items? All right, any insurance? Thank you.